Please rise for the commission meeting and remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Commissioner Shaw.
Dear Lord, hang on, hang on, hang on. Sorry about that.
The mic's not on.
The mic's not on?
Sorry about that.
Okay. Not on yet. Just checking. Okay. The Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the place with allegiance and this morning the invocation will be given. It's evening, brother. The invocation will be given by Commissioner Shaw.
Dear Lord, give us a clear vision and the courage to pursue it. Give us wisdom and inspiration for the betterment of our community. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kamis Blackshear may have the roll call, please.
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Okay. May I have a motion then to approve the minutes from the January 22nd meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
Yes, may I probably move in second to approve the minutes from the January 22nd meeting? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay. Communication petitions, Ms. Blackshear.
Yes. Mayor Commissioners, on Thursday, January 23rd, 2025, I received initiative petitions from the Clergy Community Coalition for a public hospital to be built in West Dayton. I, along with the city attorney, submitted the petitions to the Montgomery County Board of Elections on Thursday, January 23rd, 2025, for validation. Per the city charter, I'm required to present the petitions to this commission the Wednesday after the signatures are received, which is today. The charter also states that I must schedule a public hearing within 14 days after the receipt of the petitions for the commission to approve the ordinance. Therefore, I have scheduled the public hearing for this matter for Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the City Commission chambers.
Okay.
And that is all I have.
Okay. Thank you. So I understand we have some presentations this evening. I know one of our very, very, very popular staff members, people I was looking forward to hearing your comments and input, Mrs. Gondo. So I'd like to have Mr. Steve Gondo, Director of Planning, Neighborhoods and Development, to the podium to present monthly updates as far as demolition is concerned.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
Mayor Commissioners, City Manager, Clerk. It's that time of the month again, and this is kind of a unique because this is going to now be, you know, our last month of the 2024 calendar year. So we have kind of the monthly activity for the demolition update, as well as a few areas we're going to kind of look at the activity across the whole year. So let's jump into it. So for December, we had 13 demolitions. Eleven of those were ARPA, two were Ohio DOD. That level of effort got us to above 200 for the entirety of 2024. We had 208 demolitions. The bulk of those, you'll see, were the ARPA funds. So really good goal. I think our team was striving. We definitely wanted to, if our work was going to kind of be on pace of what we were imagining, we knew we had to exceed the 188 to stay on track through the end of 2026. So achieving that 208 demolitions was a really good feat for the team. The worst slide that we like to talk about, we started, as of November, we had 88 piles. We removed four in December. Unfortunately, three were added, so we're at 87. So again, it's that give and take. And this was a month where there really wasn't much change. You'll see first, this is the emergency demolitions. Typically, these can be structural, most likely these are fire, or these were fire incidents that we were asked to demolish the structure. The planned demolitions and removal, you'll see mostly in the ARPA areas with two of the ODDs outside of those areas. And then for our year in its entirety, you'll see that not only did the work take place in the ARPA focus areas, but with the partnership we have with the land bank and the ODD funds elsewhere throughout the city and even the region, because we do partner up with them for demolitions across the northern half of the county. But what this shows is that, you know, we're making progress in the ARPA areas, as well as additional areas beyond that, because we had added in some of the ODD demolitions in the year. In December, we had nine properties added to structural nuisance. And so one of the things you look at is that for 2024, 450 properties were added to structural nuisance. So similar to the, you know, part of that contribution is the piles, you know, so as we get a structure added in, that gets placed in structural nuisance. I do want to, you know, just kind of look at, though, that it is not always a path to demolition. We, our team is equipped and able to, we are where we can, working with them, with our partners, on structural rehabilitation. Obviously, the funds that you gave us through ARPA, to do that, where those structural nuisances, if they do land in those targeted areas, we are trying to connect them with those partners to try to get those properties, if they can be rehabilitated, back out. So again, it is not always indicative that a property will head toward demolition, but we do try to leverage the resources to try to get them funds to bring it back online. Our pipeline, so for the month of December, you'll see where we had, we moved our work into the surveying the properties, remediating the properties, so that they'll be ready for demolition this month. For the year, we processed 428 title reports, 163 asbestos surveys, and 83 remediation. So that is, you know, getting properties in that pipeline and moving from survey, title report to the surveyed remediation, preparing them for demolition. Our before and afters, 46 row, I mean, just significantly blighted structure. And honestly, that picture on the right is peaceful. You know, it's a nice improvement on that site. Same with Grafton. You just immediately noticed the two other homes on either side with the removal of that structure. 704 Randolph, very similar, and it's that time of year, so you'll see the snow in those photos. But 12 to 14 Sander Court, that was a unique one, where that was working with the Huffman community. The trouble there was its historic district. So it also required working with our planning division staff to take it to landmarks. Landmarks agreed that it was not contributing, it was beyond repair. There was a number of factors that they said, yeah, it would, you know, better off that it be demolished. And so I know that was a huge problem for that community, and they're, as partners with us, excited to see that go. 2301 Della, so this was our, I think Commissioner Shaw was there with me. This was a project with the land bank. They wanted to have kind of a signature kind of demolition. It just happened to be about five degrees that day. No amount of coffee or donuts could overlook it. But why this mattered was because this is a, was a really blighted commercial structure right in the middle of a residential community and had been a problem in that community. And as you know, working with the land bank, we're moving in there with the Welcome Home Ohio program to build new homes and to facilitate any repairs on eligible properties. And so it's hard to make investments when you have a significant blighted structure like that. And so they invited everybody out, they did a demolition out there, it was, it was just cold. And so, but we're glad to see that gone, and we'll be working, moving forward on the next phase of infill with that community and the land bank. And then 291 Air, here was a fire damaged structure that really close to the Ronald McDonald House and all the investments being made by Dayton Children. So we are glad to see that we are finally able to move that property and remove that. Okay. I'm going to have to actually pull a slide up, because actually the next one's encouraging. Okay. So for 2025, here's where we stand. As of now, we have 247 structures on contract, and the bulk of those, as, these are kind of from the last quarter of 2024 that you all approved, 118 of those are in Southern Dayton View, 56 are in Santa Clara, 24 in Westwood, 21 in Roosevelt, and then miscellaneous is anything from like seven or eight in Old North Dayton. There's a few in Five Oaks. There's a few kind of random that it, they represent probably seven or fewer. But I know that there was a question, a concern, and that Southern Dayton is in this next round, as is Santa Clara. We have 50 piles on contract that will be coming out, as well as we have 104 additional ODD demos on top of these numbers. So I did have to pull out my calculator, but my numbers, if they're not lying, tells me that we have 401 demos in place for 2025.
Okay.
And so that is a considerable sum, and, but we are staffed up, we have, the team's ready. And so, yes, we have till the end of '26, but we have a very full plate ahead of us. As I mentioned previously, 99% of our ARPA-funded projects are encumbered, so we did a great job of utilizing almost every dollar you gave us for that, that part of the Dayton Recovery Plan. And as we note, we're on the clock, we have 36 months down, and we have 24 to go. And so we're really excited. Again, we're excited where we ended in '24, but we, everything we've done in that last quarter to prepare for this next wave, and so it's going to be a lot of work coming into the communities, especially this second wave, beyond the first wave of the focus area. So now we're hidden kind of beyond there. And if you look back at the map, you'll see that, you know, we did a pretty good job of getting beyond even the first focus areas of ARPA. So really pleased with the team and appreciative of all of your support. At that point, I will stop and take any questions you all might have.
Okay. So I'm not sure what Commissioner Shaw was thinking, being out there at five degrees, but I'm sure he had fun.
It was a blast.
Yeah. Commissioner Turner Sloss, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have any questions this evening. I just want to congratulate you and your staff again. As already mentioned, this is one of my favorite out briefings that we receive at the end of the month, so kudos to you and your staff. If I could, if you could send us all an electronic version of the presentation, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Fairchild.
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. More importantly, thank you for all of the work. If I understand you right, we did 208 in 2024, and we're going to do over 400? We're going to do 400 in 2025, so you're doubling the workload on your team, so that's, makes me take a deep breath.
Yeah. Well, we have, and we have through 26 because, I will say, the 104 on ODD is, there's a little bit of a, depending on what the state does. We know the award hit. There's 150 total in that contracted land bank, so it will be a matter of the timing. So I should say that that 104 could probably, will probably straddle 2025 and 2026, because that's a little bit different than the other source of funds.
And if my math is close, we still have about 300 some in 2026 to get to, to get to that 1,100.
We, yeah, well, that final year will be about reassessing kind of the, because as we mentioned, what do we do with, you know, when we remove piles, add piles? So as I've talked about, this is going to be kind of my work in '25, is to really, you know, look at our course of action that we had at the beginning, and then figuring out with all those added unknowns, the added piles and some of the other, other additional structural nuisances, how that factors in before the end of '26 and where we land. So that's a little bit of work out to do this year.
I saw that we added 450 properties to the nuisance list. What's that take us up to? Because there's been some that have come off, obviously.
Yeah.
Like 200 have come off, we've added 450 on. What's that?
That's part of my 2025 work, is again, reassessing where, as we're getting these final numbers in, seeing what we've done from the start, removed, and then what's been added, where that, where that current number is, so we have a better number to provide you all and the city manager.
Yeah. At some point, can we see that integrated in with the comprehensive housing survey? Because we had those numbers by category.
Um, yeah, trying to think how that, I don't know, I'm not, I think there's some correlation there. I would, because again, I think a structural nuisance property could straddle at three, four, or five, but...
Yeah, I don't know that they are integrating, because it's not something that the Housing Steering Committee is looking at as far as demolition, Commissioner. That's a different set of folks that are driving that strategy and evaluating, but we certainly will keep you updated on, on both as we move forward.
Well, the end goal, I mean, it seems like there are two poles of the same end goal, right? We want our neighborhoods to be safe and stable. We have some properties that need to come down, we have some properties that need to be rehabilitated.
Right.
You're talking about some of, not everyone on the nuisance list, and it seems like that comprehensive survey is the...
The Housing Condition Survey?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Becomes kind of the key, where you can see both how the demolition and the other work is all coming together.
Well, certainly, they inform one another. But remember, we're doing the Housing Condition Survey every two years.
Right.
Right? So yes, certainly, they will inform, because that data will be caught, picked up every time we do the survey, but...
Okay. You good?
Um, yeah.
You sure? Take time. Okay. Commissioner Shaw.
I'm good. I was just going to say, thanks to you and your staff. I mean, you all were out there with me that day, and I think it was your entire staff in the freezing cold. And just thank you for that kind of work and outreach into the community. I know that the neighbors really appreciated that, so.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Joseph.
Yep, just one thing. Thank you, Steve. It has been probably a decade since we've seen these kind of numbers of demolition, especially nearing 400. So great work, thank you. We know it's going to be a challenge, and we've seen this before, but I'm confident you all can pull it off. You've done a great job this year. So please, give our thanks to your staff.
Will do. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. City's looking better.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right. So I'd like to call now Mr. Scott Hamilton, who is the Area Development Director for the UNCF, to provide a brief update about the mayor's UNCF luncheon. Scott Hamilton, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and the city commissioners and clerk, for having me present to you the United Negro College Fund. And this is a time of gratitude and celebration for the impact that the historically black colleges and universities across the nation, and in particular in the state of Ohio, what it means for all of us. And we are so grateful that Mayor Mims has agreed to lend his name to a luncheon that we're going to have on Friday, that will have Dayton's own Edwin Moses providing brief remarks and celebrating his affinity and appreciation for his HBCU education from Morehouse College and the Olympics. So I, well, I'm here to just share with you gratitude again, and I don't know if anyone knew this, but we have two HBCUs in our greater area, Central State and Wilberforce College. And I also don't know if anyone knew that Wilberforce is the first HBCU in the country.
Yes, sir.
All right. And that was 1856, when it was established. Since then, the total economic impact of the two colleges in our region amounts to $124 million.
Okay.
Right now, currently, the two universities are having 1,234 jobs in the area. Many reside in the greater metropolitan area of Dayton, I'm sure.
Yes.
And the graduates have a total lifetime earning of almost a billion dollars. So that shares with all of us how important it is to have luncheons, have opportunities to shed, shed light and bring awareness about the impact of HBCUs, and what it means for the tax base in this area and for the state of Ohio. That concludes my remarks.
Okay.
The event is at 11:00 at Sinclair College. It is now sold out. It will end at 1:00. Again, Edwin Moses will be speaking, and there's a gentleman sitting behind me, Darius Beckham, who has really helped a Cleveland-er find his footing in Dayton. Thank you, Derek.
Now, we appreciate you being here.
Yes.
I appreciate you coming down all the way from Cleveland.
All the way.
Yeah.
And I have to tell you, this is so warm. I don't know what you, I am, this, it feels like 70 degrees.
Every time I've been in Cleveland, even in the summertime, it's been cold. So I do understand. So any comments for my colleagues? I know Ms. HBCU from Fisk University. Commissioner Turner Sloss, like to make a couple of comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to thank Mr. Hamilton for making that drive to visit us and to provide comments and the support for UNCF. So again, thank you very much for all the work that you're doing. And thank you, Mr. Beckham, for lending your support.
Okay. Commissioner Fairchild.
My pleasure. It's great to meet you in person and look forward to being at the luncheon, but more importantly, supporting our HBCU and our students who attend. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Howard University, Christopher Shaw.
Likewise, I appreciate you coming down here and the work that you do. Mine is a terrible thing to waste, and I'm blessed.
But a great thing to invest in.
That's exactly right.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Joseph.
Thank you for your work. Obviously, the results of HBCU education speak for themselves here.
Yes.
We really appreciate the work you do.
Okay. Only thing I'd like to add is one addition, the Central State University. Okay? All right. Thank you so much.
I held back on saying OH.
IO.
Okay.
I understand. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay. Ms. Blackshear, do you have any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I have none, Your Honor.
Kamis Dixting, any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, I have no additions or deletions to this evening's calendar. There are just a couple of things that I'd like to highlight. One is Item B2, which is a contract with LJ Dewise Company for Resident Park Improvements upgrades. So this is a almost $300,000 contract to improve park shelters, utilities, sidewalks at Residence Park. So excited to bring this investment into the neighborhoods. And this actually was a rebid, because our first process came overestimate, so they did have to value engineer a little bit, but this is the lowest and best, and we're excited to get this contract in place, so the work can happen early this year. And then finally, Emergency Resolution Number 6846-25. That is a resolution that extends our temporary moratorium with regards to group homes. As you know, we have been, we have outside legal that we've been working with. We are doing an engagement process throughout the city with regards to stakeholders, and now we are also doing some regional conversations. So this will give us another six months to wrap up that work and bring forward the best recommendation to you after that work is done.
Okay.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. So Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on calendar items?
None on calendar items, Your Honor.
Commissions, comments on calendar items? Commissioner Turner Sloss?
Yes, very briefly. Thank you, Ms. Dixting, for those updates, and I'm glad to see the introduction of the legislation for extending the temporary moratorium for the group home. So thank you for bringing that forth, and as well as to the Law Department. If I could, if you could please make sure that you provide us with the information. I would like to be a part of those conversations, those regional and local conversations in regards to where we are, as well as the outside council recommendations. So thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Fairchild.
Yeah, just one question. Will the Residence Park upgrades be done for National Night Out in August?
By August? Uh-oh, there's more than a, there's a more, more of an ex-
More than a yes, more than a yes and no answer?
Exactly.
So there's, there's quite a few-
Wait till you get to the-
Get to the mic.
There's quite a few amenities that's being done there. So I want to say yes. That certainly would be our goal, for it to be done earlier in the year than that. We do also have a, one of the restrooms going in, one of the modular restrooms, and then putting in the sidewalk that will go from that place down to the parking lot. So there's quite a few things that's in play there, but we certainly hope to have that done by then.
Okay. That'd be great. I was just thinking how, what a nice time to celebrate, you know, because that community is always so supportive when we do National Night Out, so.
Right.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Joseph, nothing?
I just want to say thank you for the Residence Park contract. Those of us who walk around Residence Park, everybody up here does it, we really appreciate that, because they are in some serious need to fix it. So thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. I have none. May I have a motion then to approve the City Manager's recommendations?
I move to approve the City Manager's recommendations.
I second the motion.
Okay. So I'm probably moving in second to approve the City Manager's recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay. Legislation then, Ms. Blackshear.
First reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6846-25, extending a temporary moratorium not to exceed 180 days on the acceptance and processing of applications for zoning, occupancy, conditional use, and/or building permit approvals for residential facilities, also known as group homes, within the city of Dayton and declaring an emergency.
Having been declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of Resolution Number 6846-25.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay. So I'm probably moving in second to have Emergency Resolution Number 6846, that's to four, declaring emergency. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay.
Second reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6846-25, extending a temporary moratorium not to exceed 180 days on the acceptance and processing of applications for zoning, occupancy, conditional use, and/or building permit approvals for residential facilities, also known as group homes, within the city of Dayton. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
First reading, Resolution Number 6847-25, authorizing the acceptance of grant award from the State of Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Emergency Management Agency, in the amount of $105,000 and zero cents on behalf of the city of Dayton. Second reading, Resolution Number 6845-24, declaring the intention of the commission to vacate Hickory Street from the western, from the western ten, ten, ten U.S. to Alberta Street. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
That is all, Your Honor.
Okay. So Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
Mayor, three citizens have registered to speak. I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on. You will have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience in attendance, please be mindful, this is a business meeting, and we kindly request that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand-clapping, finger-snapping, and conversations that will prevent the City Commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I call to the podium Kevin Keller.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, audience. My name is Kevin Keller, 3922 East Third Street, Dayton, Ohio, 45403. I'd like to start today by mentioning something that, speaking of demolition, the Wright Brothers' first factory. And I just am inquiring, why haven't we heard anything on the restoration? Speaking restoration, that'd be a great place to start. I would even encourage, see if volunteers could help. I would love to say that I worked on the Wright Brothers' first factory. I have construction experience, I'm also an aircraft mechanic, and a lot of passion in me to see that thing fall apart. And was it a nuisance fire? We never heard about how it started. I really think that it's in the best interest of the city of Dayton, because we are the it's in the best interest of the city of Dayton because we are the birth of aviation. We don't seem to have many monuments showing it, but that would be, I think, a great example to bring back to life and turn it into a museum. As well as, I wonder what happened to the sculpture we were supposed to have at I-77 and what happened. My family was here recently mentioning the fact that Dayton has so many opportunities to do things, and they just they dry up. I hope that changes. The second item I'd like to mention is the speed on East Third Street coming down the hill from Smithville. People are competing for that lane, either one down to two lane or two lane to one lane. And I have my house right on that that Quentin East Third intersection, and it's scary. We people have died there. We had two major accidents last year, and several in the snow because people do not understand what that hill does to you in the snow and into a turn. My house is at the base. I really hope we can find something to do, like speed bumps and cameras, because it showed people, you know, cutting each other off to get into that prime lane. I really hope that changes. The third is a Dayton gem idea that I have, putting gems, these big composite gems, like Lexington has horses and Louisville has horses, Cincinnati has pigs, and Dayton has the F-16s in Fairborn on the lamppost. That was, I think, would be a great idea to exploit the fact that we, when you come into town, you know what the Dayton's known for. The Gem City were also the birth of aviation. And like near the Air Force Museum, they could have a gem in front of the Air Force Museum and have artists compete for their work to be on that, and it would be aviation-related. And also have advertisers, local businesses, to buy space on that gem. We could put one in front of the library. We could put one in front of the Dragon Stadium. We could put one in front of the arcade. We could put one in front of the VA. The VA was Veterans Administration Hospital was the first hospital to treat VA veterans. It was called the Central Branch. And you go there and you see some of the old buildings that are awesome there. And I really hope that we can take an opportunity to exploit what Dayton has to offer the world. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, if anybody wants to see my little thing there, there's my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Thank you.
Jennifer Evans?
Jennifer Evans, 702 Troy Street, Dayton, 45404. So I was here last week making comments about the fire at 203 Grove. I am happy to report that since then, the garage has been blackboarded, which has been extremely helpful. It has been cordoned off. Our understanding is that the police department has declared it to be a nuisance property, which apparently means that they have the authority to remove people immediately from the property, which is a good thing because we continue to call almost daily because people are on the property. I also understand, you know, now it's been declared a fire pile will hopefully rise to the top of the demolition list. And again, I'm hoping that when the fire pile is removed, the garage is removed at the same time. Because even once the fire pile is gone, that people are picking through, they'll continue to try to use that garage as living space. I am also happy to report that the abandoned vehicle that I talked about last week has been removed. So I appreciate Commissioner Turner Sloss putting her weight behind that. In terms of demolitions, you know, yes, I applaud the city for doing the best job that they can to get those taken down. But there's still work to be done in Old North Dayton. I understand, you know, we've got seven or eight coming up. That's great. I hope two of those are 1815 Warner and 207 Alton, right around the corner from each other, basically neighbor houses. I mean, we were told back in August, it would be two to three weeks before they came down. They're still there. We need all of these properties to come down. I know everybody in the city that has nuisance properties to be demolished says the same thing, but they need to come down. So we continue to appreciate your support, and we'll keep continue to take keep an eye out on 203 Grove. Thank you.
And we're doing the best we can. Thank you so much for coming to let us know.
David Woods?
David Woods?
Hello, Mayor and City Council. A pleasure to meet y'all again.
Evening.
How you doing? David Woods, 3230 Lakeview Avenue. Basically, I'm complaining. I went to the mayor of Ketterin last night, and I complained about her crooked cops, as far as them trying to cover up. Basically, when I told her I'm going to sue the city of Ketterin for $13 million. I wanted I told her I want $2 million for, you know, the council, $2 million for Civil Rights Commission, Christine McDonald, who investigated Ketterin Hospital, proved that they lied on me and got me trespass illegally, and still have that malnourished choke my dad in the throat still there to this day. And also, not merely for me, for they caused me more mental stress as far as, you know, suicidal and psychotic a little bit, was my doctor's put on here. They caused that, but not let me see my dad. I'm his main power attorney, a medical over him. And by law, they're criminals because I'm his main power attorney, medical. And they stood to death. I told me that he's dead on this earth. Well, I complained about her when I the first time on the 14 about it. Well, the police went ahead, and I sent one of the police reports so I could show her that when I caught when I went to that hospital, that I called their police to go with me because they said I couldn't go in there. It was trespassing. The hospital said they own the police. Well, Ketter police Ketter police said, oh, well, we destroyed the evidence. I said, what are you talking about destroying the evidence? Then I told them I'm going to tell the mayor and the chief police. They said, oh, don't tell them. Then they said, well, we didn't have the information because you had your number 2161 I got now. He said, well, you need your old number. So I gave my old numbers, 937250 and 937430. Then they said, oh, we still can't find it. I said, that's cool. So I said, I went ahead and called Consumer Seller, and then I have, you know, my lawyers involved. And it shows on here on August 17 at 1:43 that I called them, and they were there at Ketterin Hospital. And when they came there, the dispatcher said, what car car are you in? I said, I'm in a red car. So then they said, no. Ketter police came there with their police and went on the side of Sergeant Corey Scott, that racist cop from Ketterin Hospital with Captain Perez, lying cop, went ahead and had a white cop, police officer right there, standing like this, like he was crushed. They looked like they can't look at you. And then they took their side. So I let the mayor know that. I let the chief of police of Ketterin know that that was in there. He looked at the paper. I said, I got Consumer Seller next week going to pinpoint when I was in there, prove that I was there. He said, no problem. I see right here that on 1:43 PM that we were there. And so he let the mayor know. And I let him know, I'm letting the city of Dayton, everybody know that I want that type of money for definition of character for the fact that they said I made a threat on there. And they told all the Ketterin Hospital was there. And then two, the chief police, I'm coming after him on Inglewood. I went to their office because I want to get some more paperwork there. He been running for me like I'm a Jehovah Witness when I come there. He don't want to go in there and argue with me. I'm in his own territory. He don't want to argue with me. You know what I'm saying? So basically, I'm coming out there on the studio too. I asked that everybody in the city of Dayton, call the mayor of Ketterin and all them, and make sure I get that money and civil rights get that money. Because Christine McDonald did an excellent job approving the racism of the city. And I wish everybody was like y'all, City Council, the right people.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That is all, Your Honor.
That's all. Okay. Dixing, have any closing comments?
Your Honor, I have a few. I just wanted to, in reference to Mr. Keller's question with regards to the Wright Factory, you know, this Q1 of this year, we anticipate being having the full report. There was quite a delay due to vendor availability and stabilizing the structure so that a structural analysis could actually be performed because of the question of safety for the structure. So as soon as I have that, you know, you'll be you will all receive that report and along with the recommendation with regards to redevelopment. We have continued our conversations, though, with the National Park Service and been doing the work to transfer that property, hangers one and two. So there is still intention of, you know, having National Park Service having some, you know, opportunity there, whether it's a, you know, renovation of the existing, a replication of the historical because, you know, one and two were the hangers that got the most damage. But at any rate, we are still that is still in very much in process. I also wanted to just remind you that, you know, with regards to removal of fire piles, when we did the mid-year transfer, there was $2 million that was transferred to dedicated towards removing fire piles. So we do have a good source of funding that to support our continued work on getting those fire those now 87 fire piles off of our grid. And it is our policy to never leave a garage when we are demolishing a structure, a house, right? So we take it all. If there's a garage leftover, oftentimes, that's a private demolition. It's not the city of Dayton that's done that. But just wanted to point that out. And that is all I have.
Okay. Ms. Blackshear, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay, Commissioners, Commissioner Turner Sloss, any closing comments?
Yes, very briefly, I would like to thank Mr. Keller. Thank you very much for bringing your concerns before us. And thank you, Ms. Dixing, for providing additional context in terms of the concerns that Mr. Keller has raised. And in terms of the speeding on Smithville, I believe that that's something that we're looking into as well, understanding that there are the mobile unit speed camera is rotating throughout the city. But I'm sure that we are making way to make sure that we address those concerns on Smithville. So again, thank you, Mr. Keller, and thank you for bringing forth the Gem City recommendation. I look forward to working with you on that. Ms. Evans, thank you very much for providing us with an update. We will continue to monitor. And you heard the briefing this evening. We're aggressively moving to address the structural nuisance, the demolition, the fire piles. So again, we will continue to work with you and provide you with an update on that. And I will I'm glad that you're still here so I can get the 815. I need to make sure that I have that street correct, the additional two properties that you mentioned that needed to be demolished. Mr. Woods, thank you for being here, and I continue to wish you all the best in seeking your legal counsel on the issues and the concerns that you have raised this evening. And then I would like to also, brought to you by Ms. McClendon, thank you very much, Ms. McClendon, for providing this information. The Neighborhood Leadership Institute is now open until February the 14th. NLI is a 10-week program that trains trains, excuse me, Dayton residents for leadership. And interested residents can submit their applications through the city of Dayton website. And then also, the Black Unity Conference will be held at Sinclair Community College this Saturday, February the 1st. The show explores the civil rights movement through the lens of Ivana Gregory, the daughter of legendary human rights activist Dick Gregory, and building two, the Blair Hall area, starting at 11:00 a.m. And registration is in fact free at Sinclair Community College. So thank you very much, Ms. McClendon, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fairchild?
Thank you, Commissioner. I think you've said it well, and I have no comments tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw?
Just one thing, February 26 through February 2 is winter restaurant week. So just encourage everyone to support our local restaurants. You know, if we don't take advantage of and utilize these businesses, they will not be around. And we know that we desperately need these kinds of amenities in our community. So please go out and support your small businesses in Dayton.
Thank you. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing, the Human Race Theater is showing A Distinct Society, Society from February 4 to 16. It's an interesting story, talking about family separation at the U.S.-Canada border and how they dealt with it. The February 4 showing is a pay what you can night to support Dayton Food Bank in Catholic Social Services Refugee Resettlement Program. This is a great time to support both those organizations. The February 9 show features a post-show discussion led by our own Jeanette Horowitz from Welcome Dayton. So they're showing at Human Race Theater from 4 to the 16th, called A Distinct Society, but we encourage you to go to the 4th or maybe the 9th. Hope to see you there. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to, excuse my voice, to thank Dayton Public Schools and the Ford Foundation for their work, I think, for the last couple of days and working with the community as well, and and the young people in terms of developing ideas and concepts to reinforce the next generation of learners. So their conference involved a lot of teachers, a lot of parents, a lot of administrators, and also community members who are very supportive of the process. You know, we've been talking for quite a while about the multitude of jobs that this community continues to create for more and more of our citizens that we have in Dayton. And so they're stepping up their game with more and more programs for our young people as well to move into some of those spaces as well. So again, thanks to Board President Goodwine and Superintendent Lawrence on the great work that they're doing in that space. So love and peace for all, hatred for none. With no business becoming for this commission, this meeting is adjourned.